Convene the meeting that was recessed earlier. And Assistant Town Manager Christie, would you pick up, please?
Yes, sir.
Four C on the agenda.
So, um, my computer's decided not to let me see the screen at the moment. But if you look at our revenues, we'll begin there. We're on target for revenues based on what we brought in last year between February and June. And looking at where we are right now with the accommodations tax, staff estimates that we're going to come in about $50,000 over what was projected for the year by the end of this year, if everything stays on track for collections. If you look at, thank you, the miscellaneous B part one, that line looks to have a lot of overage in it. And basically how miscellaneous B part works is typically it is only our dock facility, 50/50, and any facility rentals like the Pavilion or the Picnic Shelter. However, when we get grants that come in, it goes into that line. And then the board can choose whether they want to take that and move it into a line in revenue with its own name, or let it stay where it is. So currently, the overage in that line represents where the county paid us back at the beginning of this fiscal year for the Miss Katie dredging that happened at the end of last year. And also their contribution for the upcoming Lockwood Folly Ben Widener project that will happen at the end of this month.
And how much is, was that from the county?
From the county, $106,250 for Miss Katie, $33,939 for Lockwood Folly project. So we'll still have some collections that come in there for those other programs, like when we do 50/50 for concerts, the people will still rent the dock back then.
Okay.
And then, none of the transfers have occurred yet. Those happen at the, either the end of the fiscal year or when the project's executed. And the walkway, we'll turn in our reimbursement as soon as that's completed down at 441. So that's kind of overview of the major standouts in the revenues. And I'll pause there in case you guys have more revenue questions before we move to expenditures.
I've got a couple just from my own education.
Okay.
Under the rec programs, it looks like we brought in a fair amount of money. Which one's the big moneymaker there? Is it the pickleball classes? Is it the yoga? Or are they all kind of the same? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, the big one would probably be tie dye. That's going to be your largest.
Really? Huh. I wouldn't have guessed that.
But also, the way the other programs work, so yoga, the shag classes, the pickleball, those instructors are all contract. So they collect those fees, and then they turn in the percentage by contract back over to the town.
Okay, great. Thanks. Would you re-educate me on what the sales tax refund is?
For which one? Where are you looking at?
Uh, that's dash, it's, uh, 0367?
So when we pay sales tax on items, we get that refunded instead of us. So when we make larger purchases, and typically, I think Margaret takes care of that at the end of the year as well.
Okay. All right. I think I understand that the federal government does, we don't pay that tax, basically.
Correct.
Is it state sales tax or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
I had one question. For the renters campground food trucks, is that also the dock? Or is the dock, where's the dock?
No. That's just 441. The dock is what I was explaining is in miscellaneous B part. That's your dock fee, your 50/50, and any facilities, which facilities would be Pavilion or Picnic Shelter.
Okay. So that's just pure 441 pure area?
Yeah. Former Commissioner Kwakawski wanted, worked really hard to say that the peer being parsed out by line item so that the peers' costs were captured expenditures and revenues. So that's just your peer there.
Okay. So the expenditures are broken out too when we get to those?
Yes.
Okay.
I got one other question relative to the peer. Do you think the food trucks participation will pick up? I never saw a whole lot of it. Maybe I just missed it.
Um, I think it depends on the product. What we've heard in response from folks is that, like, the doughnuts has done extremely well, and they were there a lot, and they've asked to come back this year. But your fee that was established based on the market of what other places are is $40 a day, and they have to be self-contained, so they have to use their generator. And when the prices went up for food last year, there were several of them that just couldn't make it. And so they did not return. I think it's, I've had several to contact me this year. But it's just kind, I think, depending on the product and just what people are in the mood for, and their price points for their products.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
So can I ask one quick question? So there's no revenue for the house that's next to the sewer station, right?
That is not a B part asset. That's a water fun asset.
Thank you.
Sorry. The camog grants for the pier, that's just not come in yet? Is that?
Yeah. It works on a reimbursement, so we have to complete the project before we can turn it in. And that's the one that's being worked on right now by Richardson. So when he completes it, we'll turn in all the invoices and get reimbursed.
Okay. So it will show up in this year?
It should. I mean, I can't guarantee how the state's going to work on their end, but we'll turn it in in the expedited manner as soon as he finishes.
Okay. And then things like that, if they don't, do they just get, it's appropriate, carries over to next year, so it won't show up in next year's budget? Or how do we account for it?
It will show up in next year's budget.
If we don't get the grant this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's make sure we're particular with those words. If we don't receive the reimbursement this year, because we've been approved for the grant.
Right.
And the board's accepted.
Yeah. I just, if the cash doesn't come in this year as revenue?
They're booked whenever they're received.
Okay. And I guess the follow-up was, is it the same for expenses? You know, like, if we have an expense in here, but we haven't paid it, that's, still shows up next year? Or does that get a different treatment?
It depends on whether we book it as a prior year expenditure that we're going to accomplish in, like, 45 days, or whether we need to actually can re-put it into next year's budget. It may be if it's going to be something that doesn't happen until October or November, that we don't hold that over, and then we just re-appropriate it for next year, just like we're starting it next year. But there is a process that if something, let's say, we started it in June, and it just is not going to finish until July 30, and we thought it was going to be complete in June, it can still count towards this year's budget.
It just shows up like an accrual, right? So, okay.
So if y'all are good on revenues, we can go to the expense side?
Um, well, just one, these transfers, they'll all happen close to the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
It's like the closing the door on the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And to do the same thing on the expense side, to highlight some of the larger standouts on your page, to do that, we'll, we'll go over to the second page, and then we can come back with specific questions y'all have by line. But if you go down to the middle of the page, access and recreation line, that's 5007104300. That's one of our largest remaining expenditures line, and that is where your Key Bridge Agreement projects, along, not just them, but along with other operation items for the strand and accesses or house. Examples of other operation items would be, that's where we pay for the dumpster that we take the beach trash off the beach strand with, and any actual other accesses other than the ones that are identified in the agreement, that we're rebuilding, Co-Kina for parking lots. So that line has that, those items. As an update to your ADA projects list, Avenue A plans and specs are on the website as of day before yesterday, and out to contractors yesterday morning with bids to do back February 26. With the bike lane work coming together, and based on its location at the western end of the island, staff thinks that it's best for the 801 O B W to be considered as a carryover to the next budget year. It likely will not be accomplished this year for logistics reasons. And then, if you go to the Lockwood Folly dredging line, which is about five up from the bottom of the page, for the upcoming Ben Widener project, we've given the Corps the money through the M O A with the state. We have not had to contribute operations and maintenance funds for the Merritt and Merton this year, in a large part are directly related to the lobbying efforts, where we had money that was put into that line for the Corps in the federal budget. And because of that, we have not had to expend as much as we thought we were going to. You guys may not have to spend any more money out of that line this year, but I would use it as a failsafe in case we get into a situation at, like, the end of last fiscal year, where the Corps' fleet cannot get in, and we have to use a Miss Katie again, because that's about the amount that you spent last time. And then, if you go up to the, I'd say, the first, in the first quarter of the page, the public restroom line, 5007101500. That included an additional $200,000 this year for specifically the bathrooms at Avenue E and 114 O B E, which are part of your Key Bridge Agreement. We're pushing to accomplish both projects prior to the end of the fiscal year. We're waiting on a permit modification at 114 O B E. And as I just told you, the bathroom is part of the specs that are out for Avenue E due back February 26.
Quick question. I believe the board had appropriated 264,000 bucks for bathrooms. It might have been back in August or something. My question is, is that 264 kind of split between the access line and this public restrooms line? I was, I was just wondering where the 264 went, or maybe I misremembered the number.
I think you're remembering a number, but I think you're remembering it lumped to bathrooms in your mind, and it was for all these projects.
Right. And my question is, kind of split across there. That's why I don't see a 264.
That's right. The access and recreation line is directly where that went. The public restrooms already had this, it started out at this amount that's listed for the 220.
Okay.
And I kind of want to build on that, I think, because the ADA agreement's pretty specific. There's 10 projects. These are the projects. The funding is not so clean, so it sounds like some of the projects are being funded in different accounts. Is there a way, probably separate from the budget that we're doing now, but just say, here are the projects in the agreement, here's what we've spent so far on those projects, here's what we plan to spend? And I guess I'm, I'm looking for, you know, confirmation that we're, you know, funding the projects that are on the agreement.
Yeah. And, I mean, I think when you see, see any printouts, you would be able to see that. We've been very conscious to keep everything we can in access and recreation unless we were directed to do otherwise. For example, everything at the pier, we had previously been told to have it central to peer spending. So for that access, that would have come from pure rental and repair, because it was in the budget line as a grant. And so that was in pure rental repair. And then, public restrooms, it just makes sense, because it is a public restroom, for it to have been in the public restrooms line. So I, I think what I'm saying is your only outliers are going to be that your public restrooms for Avenue E and 114 are in your public restrooms line. Because that's where they were housing the budget. And the majority of all your other spending, we have been really conscious to keep it in access and recreation for Key Bridge.
Yeah. I just get confused trying to follow it. So, like I said, if it's, you know, separate from this, but if we could just get something that says, here's the projects, here's what we're spending on the project, here's where the numbers are buried in these different accounts or wherever, so we can get a picture of the funding to complete those projects.
And we've been keeping a spreadsheet on that, and we can get that updated and let you see that.
That would be great. That's what we need. And I, it's, I understand you got to account for it in the budget, but just, you know, a level up that says, here's, here's the agreement, here's what we're doing, here's what we're spending, and here's where the money showing, shows up in these accounts.
Okay. And then, if we're good with talking about bathrooms, so that y'all understand, that is not the bathroom that was put in the grant for block Q. That has never hit a budget yet.
Right. We're waiting on the-
When the grant is considered by the board to be accepted, you would have to add that to the budget. So these are specifically Avenue E and 114, and then the rest is cleaning for the public restroom that, where we go to twice a day in the summer.
When is that grant going to come before the board? Do you have any idea?
I'm expecting it any minute. What typically happens is, we saw that it came out in the press in, I think, the November timeframe.
Yeah.
And usually, it takes the, they're legal several months to review, and then it comes, for some reason, they've gone to a digital process, so we have to go through the effort of asking for it to come to the board in a different form. So you guys can look at it in an agenda packet, and so we're just waiting for the state to send it to us.
Are plans and specs developed for building the bathroom?
Uh, the architect did work on that, so I don't, I don't know that they're at final, I'm sorry.
You don't have them yet, but they're in the works.
I do, I do have a copy of the preliminary.
Okay. All right. Good.
And this is, I should know this, but this is a reimbursement grant, so we would pay the money, get reimbursed? Or is it something?
Yes.
Okay.
All those camog grants are. I'm just, I'd like to say something for, on the staff's behalf here, in, in support of completing those ADA requirements, we feel that the board has provided adequate, given a favorable bid climate when, when we get to that. But we feel that the board has provided adequate resources to complete all the, all the elements in that ADA agreement, and are hopeful for a positive bidding, bid climate whenever it comes to that.
Excellent. That's my understanding. I just, you know, questioned where it is. I don't know if I can, here's where these dollars are, here's where those dollars. That's kind of what I'm hoping for.
And then, moving down to what I'll call the bottom quarter of the second page, if you look at 5007106002 block Q projects, and 5007106102 pure rental and repair, obviously, there's significant money left in those lines because those projects have been put on hold. So-
And that would potentially roll over to next year, then, if the work?
You would re-appropriate funds into next budget year.
Okay.
Yeah. It would go into fund balance.
It would go into the fund balance.
Unless you roll it over as an expense line.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And so those are like the major stands, standout. See, only other thing I was gonna cover as a standout is at the, a couple of you were at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, but for anybody that was not there and has not heard, the backup plan for concerts is to hold them at the picnic shelter across the street at Bridgeview Park. We will need to have a power sub-panel drop to afford the band's 220 power and to gain more outlets. And we will also need to order Porta-Jons, because the restrooms over there are not sufficient for that load. There's only one stall in each one of them. Those contracts have to be signed and the brochure put out. So unless the staff is told today that we cannot move forward with this plan, we will be executing those this week.
Yeah. I think that's good.
And that does not need to come before the board? Is that right? You can just execute?
You do not want that to come before the board.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I'll explain to you and tell you why. Some bands charge significantly less than other bands. If you make all of those contracts public, you're going to be paying three times as much what you are for concerts now. And also, we get a much better rate than some of our neighboring towns, based on our long-working relationships with the bands.
So no need to let somebody see they've left money on the table?
Correct.
I got you. Okay. Good.
Um, so the power and Porta-Jons will need to be sourced from current operations, unless we see that there's a need to bring that back for some reason, that it's much higher than we anticipated, based on the estimates that we're hearing. And that would be a budget amendment that would come before the board.
Okay.
Um, and then, the only other thing that I'll cover here, based on you guys having a discussion about priority listings and making priorities, and trying to figure out what, what things might fall below a priority line, I'll just apprise the board that one of the programs that you can, should maybe consider that may fall down into a lower priority is Beach Rangers. And while all of those employees do a great job with what they do, I would say that currently it can be more appropriately named Hole Patrol. Based on the data that came back from their logs last year, they're spending four times as much of their time filling holes as they are with dogs, which, and tents, which was the original purpose of the program. And the program's kind of grown beyond the scope of what Holden Beach can handle with our ordinance, when things like service animals are factored in. They, if it's a service animal, and there are certain questions we can ask, and then our hands are tied. So I would just say, if you guys do look to do anything there, that it would be more appropriate to look at that now, because those employees are usually hired in the March and April timeframe, versus waiting till we get further into the budget process.
And which lines are those that?
That represents about $40,000 of your B part budget, and it's on page three, the last four lines.
Wait. So was the recommendation that it not be a priority?
I would just say that it would fall down, you know how you talked about making a line and saying things that fall lower down the priority? Even though the, all of those employees do a great job, and many of ours are returning, and I totally am an advocate for all they do, I would say with all the projects that you have, if you look for things that you have to cut, it is hard to, for us to meet the letter or intent of what the ordinance is, based on the scope that's changed outside Holden Beach.
So this basically has some safety implications with the holes and, and with dogs on the beach, right?
Well, it comes down to, honestly, and we don't want to show all our cards here, but it comes down to the fact that in a five-hour period, which is each of their shifts, that they're able to make about one and a half passes, because they're getting off and filling 20 and 30 holes.
I think that's kind of important. I walk out there sometimes at dusk, and I don't need to step in a hole, for sure. So, okay.
Just, just throwing it out for your consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've got a similar twist on safety, because I've been impressed with what Oak Island is doing, which is having their Beach Patrol Rangers fly flags with regards to rip current risk. So if it's a high rip current risk, they fly a red flag and let everybody know that there's a danger for rip currents. And I think they've had some education in ability to identify them. So if they're driving and they have a, you know, they've been trained in, this looks like it could be a rip current area, they could notify the beachgoers at that park that, to be careful.
I think you want to walk around that a few times with your attorney, because there's some liability issues there.
Well, I know what Ocean, Oak Island is doing. They're calling up every day from the National Weather Service and getting a kind of a level, and they're flying a flag associated with the level that they're getting from the National Weather Service. So that's all they're doing is a notification. They're not, once again, it's like we're saving lives, or we could save lives here, and I think that's very important.
I, I hear what you're saying about walking past the attorney, because if we didn't fly the appropriate flag or something, then it's, yeah, I think we should just float it out there, see how Oak Island handled that.
Um, so I'll answer any additional questions you have on expenditures, like standouts or need them further information, but I do have a few other things to cover with you once we go past that.
Yeah. At the bottom, the beach project or salaries, what, who is that, or what is that? Salaries Beach Project overtime, like a?
So that is the rec tech position that was added this past year, and .75 of Public Works, full-time equivalent, for the work that they do in trash removal from the beach and mowing, assisting with things like putting the shade cells up at the park when those come up and down, anything that we have to do, parts and rate-related.
That's a full-time new position?
Mm-hmm. That was last year. It's not added for, I mean, it was added last year.
So that's in addition to the, and the first page where all the salary stuff is?
Yes.
And I, yeah.
Yeah. That's, it's another area that's hard to follow, because I think salaries are getting split between B part and general fund, and is that correct? Or is that, there's, the salary numbers that are in here are reflected full-time?
The salary number for the line you just asked me about, Salaries Beach Project, is a rec tech that falls to B part, and then .75 of a full-time equivalent from Public Works for the job that they do tourist-related with strand and recreation.
Okay. I was, that one I understood. I was talking more about the salaries. This is the third down on the expenditures.
That's the assistant town managers.
Okay.
Time to educate me a little more.
Okay.
At the top of, I guess it's the second page, where we have Jordan Boulevard Ops, and I guess that's maintenance repair. I saw that we had a soil samples item. I was just curious, what's going on with soil samples there?
That's the hour, so that is where the contractor, Carolina Creations contract comes from. And sometimes they've had to do soil samples if something was off with things growing, and they've done those for us. It's also any odds and in repairs that they have to do that's outside the scope of the maintenance contract. I did want to clarify, I think on Wednesday, because Chris and I share that contract, it was mentioned, and somehow planting came up mentioned with their name. They don't do any planting for us, just for clarification for the public. They handle for mowing, except for a few of our facilities, like, they don't mow 796, they don't mow the park course, they don't mow the campground at the pier. The rec tech handles that as part of his position. But they do our main parts of our mowing, and they do irrigation. They do not plant.
Okay.
And actually, they did, for the budget estimates for the upcoming year, send their proposals, and they went down a couple hundred dollars in maintenance, so.
So if we go back to, back to the first page, when on, the second from the bottom of the rec programs, the 9,000. So it seems if you look at the 9,000 versus the 10,000, it's pretty much a wash on the actual programs?
Yes.
Except for the staff time, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next one, the beautification. So you give a thousand dollar donation, plus the maintenance of all the stuff?
They pick garden projects that, for different town spaces to do each year, and that represents the projects that they chose to do for the year.
That the town?
That the town okays. So it's in our open space in areas like Pageant Garden, like behind the fire station at the Butterfry Garden. It just changes each year based on the project list that they submit.
Okay.
So that's the 14, 7?
Yes.
Okay.
Christie, have a question on the travel and training line?
That's not just on me.
Okay. Well, my question, you wouldn't be here if it was, right?
Right.
It just says on that line, sponsorships of beach organizations. Can you tell me just what that is?
Sure. So that was, since we only have a little bit of space to try to tell you what each of these is here. It's, that specifically is like the American Shore and Beach Preservation. We may do a sponsorship for that conference. We always do a sponsorship for the North Carolina Beach and Inlet Waterways Association. That sponsorship typically gets, or always gets us the, the level that we do three attendees at the conference.
Okay. Great. I just, it wasn't clear to me.
Okay. I've got one then. Sailfish Park, that's just the McGill, and they're, they're going to finish that? This doesn't have anything in there for doing work?
Right. It's just the plan, and that will be coming before you guys at the February meeting.
I got a question. Again, my education, it's titled Rothschild and Davis Park. And when I read what that is, I'm thinking that's Bridgeview Park. Are they actually separate?
It is. No. The names changed along the way, and the line item never changed in the budget.
Okay. I just, I thought that might be it. I just wanted to ask. Question on the Corps study. I've seen some stuff going back and forth, and that we may- not have to pay anymore for that core study based on what Warden Smith is doing. How's that looking? Do we anticipate having more money to put towards that or are we going to be kind of free and clear or is that a, it's, it depends question, answer?
Well, it can always be, it depends because we have to navigate the funding streams, but based on everything that we're being told, we are free and clear now. The state made an appropriation for the town in the state budget for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that should recover, that should cover our remaining portion of the study.
Great, thanks.
And that's the CSDR study?
Correct.
Which is separate from the partnership agreement or I can't remember what it's?
That, well, when, when you go into business with the core, you have a partnership agreement for everything, so I'm going to be careful how I answer that for you. The partnership agreement that we talked about on Wednesday in Chris's budget is for stormwater.
Right.
We have a partnership agreement for the CSDR too. Anytime you start a study, you have a partnership agreement, so.
Okay, because my, my interpretation in your memo, there were kind of three potential earmarks that could be coming.
Yes.
And one's a CSDR, one's stormwater and one's yet to be assigned or figured out.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to talk about when you guys are done with the expenditure part.
So if we look at the debt interest, the same as we requested yesterday, could we break that out into debt interest for each of those projects instead of lump?
Sure, are you ready?
Excuse me?
Are you ready? I have it, are you ready?
No, no, I want to-
Yep, no, she's, she's going to give it to you right now.
No, no, I just want to see it on the sheet when we, when we go through it the next time. That's all, yeah.
Okay, can, can we clarify that? Because on the debt interest line, she's actually got the, the nomenclature, central reach, four forty-one and block Q interests.
Yes.
If we put the values there, will that be sufficient?
Well, no, I'd like to have them as a line item, debt interest for central reach, debt interest for four forty-one, so that we can understand how much each one of those are costing, the, the full cost. I guess that's a Daniel question.
Well-
Well, the auditor asked us to, we had it split out to where each line was, each debt service had interest and principal and the auditor asked us to separate it to where interest is.
Right, so I guess I'm asking for three more, I, I see you have principal, so I'd like to see peer principal, peer interest. So they are broken out, but just so that-
Can we just do that in the description though? Because the line items, that's how the auditor asked it to be done.
He wanted all your interest in one lump sum?
Yeah.
But like in the, I think what he's saying is, so he sent me an update so that I would have that answer for you in case you wanted the numbers today. And so in the comments column for the next time around where it says debt interest, it would say, for example, eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars debt service for four forty-one, twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars debt service for block Q and that would be out, spelled out in the comments, so you would still have it, it just wouldn't fit.
Daniel, don't you have a, don't you have a debt book rip sheet there that shows that also?
Yeah, I've got a, well, it doesn't have it separated, it's got the total amount, if you'd like to see that.
Well, I've, I've seen a schedule, I don't know if it was in the budget message or what's the audit, but it had all of the debt by line item and kind of-
Chronologically.
Out till the end of the debt, so you can see where it drops off and other debts are paid off.
Yeah, I've got that if you'd like to see that.
Okay, because this to me is just the accounting in the books, but that's really where we would look and say, you know, there's a light at the end of the tunnel here in terms of, you know, big debts going away.
And that includes, that would include the principal and the interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the total.
And y'all probably seen that before.
I've seen that one, yeah, that's, that's the detail.
Yeah, you can have copies, perfect.
Yeah, change for what we paid off this year.
We're just looking to know what the total cost is.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, and I'm looking for when these drop off.
And yeah, if you just put that in the comments next time, that's perfectly fine.
Yep, this is, this is.
Okay, perfect.
So do we have any more questions on expenditures before I talk to you guys about your?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What's this Chamber of Commerce?
So each year, there's contributions that are made to community organizations that make requests to the town and Chamber of Commerce is one of the ones that comes from B part because of tourism-related expenses.
That's the Brunswick County Chamber of Commerce.
And then, and the next one, the, the, it just says contributions, B part donations, that's-
And yearly, that could change, it has been the ARCS council in the past, it just, it depends on the requests that come in, but you have those in each of your funds. Different funds make contributions, the general fund also makes some.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I got a higher level question, I mean, with B part, there's restrictions, right, in terms of we give some to the county, we can spend so much on, how does that, how do we make sure we're following that? Is, is it, is there another chart that says, you know, here's all our B part dollars and the appropriate percent is being spent on these items and the appropriate percent is being spent here?
So it's, it's, and I know that, I'll just do a refresher for the public listening because I know you guys got this in your orientation, but it's three percent and two percent, three percent for tourism-related expenses, two percent for sand, there is wiggle room in the legislation that you can have sand as expense that goes to three percent. Internally, we keep a spreadsheet on that, we have been sand-heavy in the last few years, we've been doing some major projects, but we do keep track of that. It's never been something that's been to the level of detail that it's put out in these budget sheets, but we do track that.
Yeah, I, I, that's my point, I don't think we need this level of detail, but similar to the debt, if there's something that just shows out of all these numbers in B part, this is how many we've set are sand, this is how many we've set are tourism directly related, so that we've-
We got that.
Okay, that'd be helpful to have, similar to the debt, just a bigger picture view versus down here in the, a lot of detail.
So I see there was a new truck purchased?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me who that, or what that was for?
That's a new admin truck, the other admin truck is the rec tech, so Heather, David and I share that truck for any of the needs we have for programs and any travel that is required.
We have two trucks?
Tending meetings, we do.
Two trucks, that three people should share?
Oh.
Four, four people.
One, one truck goes to the rec tech and one truck is-
Is shared by three people.
Is shared by three people.
So you have a motor pool, so to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we did at the-
Does anybody drive these home?
I've been driving the truck home for about the last month.
Okay.
The rec tech does not drive his home.
So they set it to EOC?
Down at the end of the building.
Set here, okay.
That's all I had.
Yeah, I'm good. Tom, you good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so now we get into your part of the homework.
You're laughing.
But it's not, it's not-
Should I have brought you an apple?
I don't like that laugh.
I do with it every day.
Welcome to David's world.
So it's not out of the blue, it's been communicated to you, so building on what Mayor Pro Tem Meyer said, as previously communicated to you all by Town Manager Hewitt, we can make, and it, it depends on, it used to be called earmarks, that's a lot easier to say, we'll use request as a short version today on the senate side, it's congressionally directed spending, on the house side, it's community project funding, we'll just shorten that to request every time I say it. So you can basically make three federal requests, that's the most the legislators will entertain. One of those will need to be for the CSDR and that's the core portion, because we've covered ours and even though the Wilmington district will ask the federal government for their money, there's been cases in other area towns where that did not occur flawlessly like it should and when that doesn't, wow, when that happens, they have to go pencils down, which affects us, because if they're pencils down, our project's not moving forward. So to help with that, Warden Smith has helped us in submitting paperwork for that request so that they're, they get their funding and we're advocating for that, we're asking for the same thing they are on their end money-wise. And then the, as was talking about for Chris's project, you guys have a PPA agreement right now for stormwater that we're working with the core on. Through the McGill study, there's been identified about two million dollars in projects and so there's a suggestion to that you might want to consider asking for that so that we can actually go to construction. And then you have a third available. You don't have to ask for three, the first year, the town asked for three and I can't remember what happened on the senate side off the top of my head, but Representative Rousher put all three of ours forward, last year, one was put forward. So you can say two's enough and that's all we're going to do, or you can give us direction, but we've been told those are going to be due in February, at least by the end of February, so it's helpful to have some guidance on if you want to entertain a third.
And what are the dollars behind these three?
I believe your core portion of the study this year will be two twenty-five and then your stormwater for Chris is two million.
And what would be the third recommendation?
If you guys have a project in mind that you plan to pursue this year, that, that's what we're saying, if you have a project that just falls high priority to you, that you need us to look to see if there's some sort of federal program that covers that.
Okay, so, so-
Just to elaborate on that, and I know that we have several things coming together, I think that a good example of a potential third candidate or even any candidate would be funding for a fire department or a fire station on the island, but we don't know what, how much to ask for with that. That's just, I'm using that as an example of something that may be requested. Seems like to me it would be a thing, but I don't think that we know enough about how much it will take to ask for. So I'm just using that as an example of something that, that may be appropriate, but not necessarily that that's what y'all want to do, because I don't know what it would take.
Thanks, help me understand, so we've basically come up with something we think we want first and we put a dollar on it and then we ask for money to do that?
Well, we, there's a catalog that's about this thick and we have to look through it and see if there's actually funding that matches-
Right.
-up to that. And, and we use Warden Smith to kind of help us navigate that process.
In terms of figuring out how much we think they have that they want to give us?
Well, or if there's something that matches up that the federal government's supplying funding for to an actual agency, because they send it out to their agency, so we have to figure out if it's housed somewhere in a government agency that we can ask for.
Okay, and we've got to ask by February?
Is, is there any chance we can guess at, cobble together, seat of the pants estimate on the fire station? I've had several people ask about that.
So I don't understand the whole fire station, how that works, because we pay in our taxes something for the fire, isn't that a whole county thing? I mean, aren't they supposed to give us fire support and so they should be asking?
Well, I'll, I'll attempt to, to explain the framework that fire services provided to the town. Our fire service is provided via contract with a Tri Beach Fire Department, which is a, a coverage area beyond the limits of Holden Beach, it takes in unincorporated Brunswick County. And the way that, that fire department is, and that's via contract, and the way that that fire department is funded is through the collection of fire fees that are county fire fees, so your, you get a bill for a fire tax on your tax, your county tax bill, I believe.
Right.
So those funds for the operation of the fire department are provided from that fire tax, which you pay some of. So to answer your, I think your question is, should the county be paying some of this and since, well, you pay fire tax?
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering why we would, why, why they wouldn't provide the support for the additional fire updates or, I mean, Lakewood Folly doesn't have their own, or, you know, all these little places don't have their own fire station that they're serviced by Tri Beach, why aren't we? Why are we?
Well, you are serviced by Tri Beach.
Yeah, so why are we having to give additional funding? That's what I don't, I just don't understand why.
Well, we were- You know, I guess that agreement was worked out some time ago where in exchange for allowing the county to collect the fire fees and provide a house, a home for the fire department on the island, I'm, I'm speculating that that was a negotiated arrangement in order to arrive at the contract.
So we would have a similar negotiation, I assume, because, you know, they, they, if, if putting the fire station here gets us twenty-four seven staffing, they pay that, right? They pay the payroll, they staff it, we don't, so we would need to work out with them, we will, you know, enhance our fire station to allow, you know, twenty-four seven, but you've got to agree that you're going to actually put the people there. Am I understanding the way it works out? We've got a contract and it's kind of a negotiation of that contract of what we give them and therefore what they charge us?
Uh, that's a, that's a rational line of thought, yes, but.
Can we?
I mean, I, I think I want to say yes, but, you know, but that's, we're assuming what the fire department would agree to.
Can, can we kind of figure this out to, because I, I'm interested in that as the third item unless someone's got others, but like you said, we may not know enough to know what to ask.
Well, by February, I mean, if we got to have it by-
Well, I, I can tell you how the, the, prior to appropriations were made, they were based on estimates. They, they were based on estimates.
Right, yeah.
Can we see the contract, get a copy or is it out there somewhere?
Uh, it should be.
What's Tri Beach?
So you're suggesting just to enhance, to upgrade the fire station and then we're, Tri Beach would, like Tom said, would provide the firemen? Twenty-four seven if we updated it?
Well, I mean, that's the way it's set up now, basically, we provide the house for them and they provide equipment, manpower and that's it.
Unless I'm mistaken, they came and I, I'm just going to say mistaken on the timeframe because I can't remember exactly which month, but they came in the March, April timeframe, I think, last year as the previous board was setting their goals and objectives and explained that they felt they had outgrown the facility capacity and that they needed to provide, based on the population that we currently have and more full-time residents, that they needed to provide more service than just here during the summer. The board entertained looking at what may be as part of the budget to do an upgrade there, but it just fell short on reaching the objectives for the year. They came back and made another proposal on where a new fire station could be located for service radius and what those limits were and then it just was not picked up by the board. So he's using that as an example and we were, were not given any more notice either, it's kind of like, hey, if you want to present this to your board, this is when, because they change when the forms are due each year and they kind of put it out to Warden Smith, this is when it's going to be coming due, they pass it along to us and we pass it along to you pretty rapidly, information-wise, so you don't have to make a third request, but you may want to entertain that one since it was brought to you last year, just an idea.
I'm with Rick, I mean, I'm in favor, it's just, we don't know what we're requesting, is there, was there an estimate made of what it would take to, I just don't know how we pull this together in February to make a reasonable, supportable, defendable request for money. We want money to do this project and this project will allow us to have twenty-four seven staffing and we've got an agreement with the fire department that they will pay to staff it if we build them the place. I mean, there's a lot involved here for, you know, the next week or whatever it is that this do.
Do you think we can swag something out, David? I'm interested in the request.
All y'all have to do is tell us to make that a priority on that.
But how much?
That's one of the things.
Well, he'll figure it out.
And let us figure it out, because that's the way it was done for the other two.
Yeah, because I, I'm sure Mr. Evans has some input as to what we can and can't do on that site before we decide to build the Taj Mahal or something, at least I would guess. So.
Yeah, I mean, I see two, I mean, one is can we upgrade the existing station to support twenty-four seven, so that's sleeping or bathrooms or kitchen, I don't know what it is. A whole different thing is building a new fire station. I mean- I mean, one is can we upgrade the existing station to support 24/7? So it's sleeping or bathrooms or kitchen? I don't know what it is. A whole different thing is building a new fire station. I mean, those are very different. Because you've got to find out where and how big and all that other stuff. So, um.
How about the, you guys direct the staff? This is just an idea, and it can fall flat. But how about you direct the staff to coordinate with Warden Smith and see what might be available for our department funding between now and next Wednesday as a federal priority and what program that would fall under? And then on the staff side, we see if we can get anywhere close to an estimate. If we have something that comes together on both of those, you would pursue possibly having that as a request. And if you don't have it by next Wednesday, you move forward with two?
That's perfect. Yeah.
I would really much like to know how we can avoid this future going, you know, in the future going forward so we have time to actually put together a solid request that has a much better chance of being funded versus throwing something together at the last minute. It puts us at a disadvantage when we're asking for money, I'm sure.
We've been pretty effective. We've.
Yeah, we'll know better.
We haven't even talked about our priorities at all yet.
I know. This is on it.
So can we direct the staff to do that?
Do we have to make a motion?
I think it's by consensus.
Well, I think we ought to direct whether or not we're enhancing or looking to build. Those are very different things.
I think they need to.
Well, first, you have to look and see if that's even an option in there, that there's something in there.
Yeah.
Right? That's what you said.
Yeah, we need to investigate and talk to Tri Beach and find out what the requirements are. And then you can figure out, you know, take a swag at whether or not we can modify that building or if we need a new one or whatever. But.
Well, I think the first step is to see if there's anything even available that was related to fire stations.
Right.
In appropriation.
And I support what Christie stated, basically.
Me too.
I'm good. Yep.
Is that sufficient, David?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. This one should be easier because it doesn't involve money, but not always. So let's take our money hat off and put on our policy hat for the entire board. And I know that, I don't know if you guys have remembered, but Commissioner Smith is on the phone. He's been here since we started. So, um, so priorities right now in your contract, Warden Smith have three priorities that have been identified. So for example, when we, um, have communication exchange in Washington, these are the things that both them and, and the town are advocating for. So that has been federal issues related to any beach nourishment opportunities at Holden Beach, one. Two, federal issues related to Lockwood Folly inlet maintenance along with beach nourishment efforts for placement of beach quality sand on east end of Holden Beach, i.e. sand always comes to Holden Beach. Three, designated dredge bowl material disposal sites. You have up to three additional priorities that you can mutually agree upon with Warden Smith that they advocate for. So if there are any additional federal priorities, we also need to know that going into the upcoming spring and visits.
When do you need that?
Today.
Yeah, well, it'd be nice to have it today. But if you need to mention that as part of projects next week on Wednesday, I think that a project is at the end there. Um, they just need to get all their materials updated for visits.
Does, does the town have any recommendations in that area?
Those are the three that we've been working on.
Okay.
And those have been the three for, for several years.
So, so like the EPA's grant for the sewer station is not, is separate? That's a different, came in a different way? Or is that kind, is that representative of something we would?
That was representative of a request.
Previously, and we got it.
Yeah.
So unless we need more money for the sewer station, we're okay.
Yeah, this is basically policy. Anything you'd like to see us advocate policy-wise at the federal level.
Okay.
And so those are the three that you've had for a while. But you can add three more, is what you're saying? No?
Yeah. To their, to their contract, they have to agree to it. So you would put it forward and say that you want this, and they would make sure that they can advocate for that specific thing well for you. And it's, it's written in the contract as mutually agreed upon, so.
For three or six?
Three more for a total of six. Because you've got three.
Well, wait a minute. We got three money ask, right? And three policy ask.
And you can have up to three more policy asks.
Okay.
At the same money or they charge more to support more?
Same money.
No, that's in the contract.
So is there any other opportunity to add later in the year if we actually come up?
Absolutely. It just wouldn't make their, um, like, press kit for going to DC this spring. But you could add later in the year, of course.
So I think we do have a session to talk about priorities and goals and objectives.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything off the top of my head to add to that at this point. Um, those are three good topics as far as I'm concerned. But I'm not prepared to add anything at this point. So we'll, we'll have to put our thinking caps on and see what we come up with, but.
Well, until that point, though, that gives us the guidance that we need to get on the ball with.
Correct.
Getting this other stuff taken care of.
And more importantly, it doesn't seem like the, you guys want to pull any of those as not priorities which would affect the press kit currently, so.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I had is that we're not talking about Fund 70 and 90 as part of the agenda today. But if there is an agenda for the budget workshops that you guys want to include those on, then you would just need to give staff direction. You could do that at a, a later point in time as you build your agendas. That is the FEMA projects and the Beach and Inlet Capital Reserve Fund.
I do have, so 70 is FEMA and 90 is Beach and Inlet?
Yes.
Um, are we still following the fund balance policy that was put in place a long time ago when we had a certain amount of money? We put it, set it aside in the Beach and Inlet Fund?
Um, to basically transfer the residual above the maximum, 70%, over to the Beach and Inlet Management Fund. We haven't done that for this year because I believe that ratio is actually 78%. So it'd be an 8%. And it would take a budget amendment to do that. We haven't done that this year, though. And normally, we wait until after the audit comes through before we do any of those.
But this was the last, the audit's through, right?
Yeah, we just hadn't done it yet.
Okay. How about the prior year?
Had, didn't do it.
Hadn't done it or what?
Didn't do it.
So we're, we're eligible, we were above the 70% the prior year as well, right?
Yes.
So we have two that we can make?
Well, your, your, your fund balance in the general fund this year is what it is. And it would be, well, when I say this year, this past year would be the amount that would go over, that 8%, I believe.
Okay. I mean, do we need motions or is this just a policy that is typically followed?
Well, it's a budget appropriation. You just said.
Yeah, we'd have to make an amendment.
Right?
Yeah, it's got to be an amendment.
Okay.
So we just ask David to bring it in? Yeah? David?
Yes.
Okay.
I could, I could probably do it under budget officer's authority based on that resolution. But it's better to have the visibility on.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that was my question. Is policy that authorize you to just do it because it's policy or do you need a?
I, I think it does, but, but for the, the purposes of, of illumination, it's probably best to do that with a budget amendment and handle it, you know, as a, as a fund balance transfer.
So can we do that for February or is it too, too quick?
We need to get through February first.
All right.
We'll see that in March.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the FEMA line?
Yes, sir.
Um, I thought.
Which line, which line is it?
Uh, the 70.
You don't have it in front of us, do you?
Right.
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda for today, so it's not in front of you.
Yeah, I'm just, isn't that the funding we got for the last beach renourishment repair? And isn't all that money awash now and supposed to go away this year? Or am I misunderstanding, that funding line? Am I misunderstanding that completely?
It hasn't been closed out yet, though.
Okay, so, but we can't really do anything with it? The project's complete? We've got our reimbursements and all that?
We have the CAT-Z, which is the administrative side of basically our time or any, let's say, our financial advisors, those kinds of things that we had to use for the project. They still have to reimburse us for those. What hasn't been reimbursed to date is very de minimis. But we can't close it out until those checks come in.
Okay, so basically, there's nothing to talk about with that line, right? Is that correct or am I misunderstanding?
You're not misunderstanding, but we just didn't want to be remiss in it being a, a fund and not mentioning it to you, so.
Okay, because I was looking forward to that giant number moving off this, this balance sheet. I wish we had all that money every year, but we don't.
Well, yeah, I've got a question on it too, since we're talking about it. You know, I was thinking the FEMA project was, you know, 20 million-ish. But we have like 70 million running through that?
It had, it had to be set up in the project based on the worksheets that were the federal government approved. We came in at 27 million because we were very, um, fortunate and active in making sure that we bundled the project. So the federal government wrote the worksheets up as if each one of those storms would be conducted independently. And we were able to bundle all four storms together to save that, what would have been the 70, 70 million.
Wow. So there was, there was an opportunity to get 70 million. We spent 27? Is that, we were?
Well, we would not have gotten that. I mean, you wouldn't have done each.
Well, I understand. I just, it's in the fund. I, I see the number in the fund and it, you know, dwarfs everything else. It makes everything else look like nothing compared to 70 million dollars, but.
Yeah, we were required to set it up that way.
I wish they'd give us a 10% return.
Yeah, we saved the money.
You guys did such a great job, but, you know.
We'll take a percent of what we saved them.
Well, we were glad to be able to get reimbursed on the interest for the short-term note, which is, hadn't been done before. So we figured we'd better quit pushing the all-bloke on that.
I hear you.
Okay.[1718.72]